I mean, just call the order. Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner?
Here.
Reverend Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Here.
Mr. Rowley?
Here.
Mayor Saunders?
Yeah.
Mr. Shanks?
Here.
Mr. Bogler?
Here.
Please stand in the case you remain standing for the pledge tonight given by Councilmember Jay Lee Bogler.
Mr. Powerhead. Lord, we come to you tonight in a time of tragedy, turmoil, and chaos around the world. A time in which we confront an evil that threatens our very existence. An evil that commits acts of violence and terror and claim them to be in your name. But we know that our God is a peaceful and loving God. And that those who seek to do what is right and what is good will ultimately prevail. May you continue to bless our city, our nation, and our brothers and sisters around the world. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Bogler. Under communication, I remind us that we do have rules for those who wish to speak during our communication public comment period. Individuals allowed five minutes to speak. The rubs in the group, you're allowed ten minutes. But the chair does reserve the right to intervene when deemed appropriate. Anyone wish to speak on any item not on the agenda. Anyone. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers, ma'am. Stopwatch. I brought with me tonight the original Virginia flag. Adopted in seventeen seventy-six, year after we declared independence. This flag shows a picture of a woman standing over a man. The man is depicted as tyranny. The woman is depicted as victus. The United States did not want a flag that represented anything that had to do with England. So consequently, we modeled our flag after ancient Rome. For a period of time up until the time of the beginning of the Civil War, this was the Virginia flag. She carries a sword. She carries a spear. The sword is unchieved, the spear is pointed up. Now, a lot of people don't realize that Virginia did not completely secede from the Union. There were parts of Virginia that stayed with the Union. What's now West Virginia was one of them. There was a fellow by the name of Pierpointe, who was a senator in that area at the time. Also, certain counties in northern Virginia also stayed with the Union. They even had their own capital, Alexandria. There was a state of northern Virginia. It extended from what's now West Virginia, all the way down to the Chesapeake, including Maryland, which never had an opportunity to vote on secession because the president sent the army in and declared martial law. So not all of Virginia was Confederate. They had a senator who sat in Congress. During that period, it seems that the great seal of Virginia was misplaced. So they decided, rather than create it based on all the information they already had, they would come up with a new seal. And that's how we have the seal that we have today. Ken Cuccinelli, the Attorney General, who ran for governor, disliked that seal so intently that had he been elected governor, he would have changed it. I wish we would still adopt that and change it. The seal that we have today shows a woman not in armor, but in a slave dress. Ancient Roman slave dress. And I won't go into the detail that caused all the friction the last time, but it's self-evident for anyone that would care to look.
Are you near conclusion?
Sir?
Are you near conclusion?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're costing me time, Mayor. I have thirty more seconds. I would really like to see that seal replaced. Mr. Cuccinelli didn't like it. I think had we had a different governor, perhaps there would have been other actions taken. It's the only state flag that has nudity on it. The entire country, Canada, or all the territories.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak on any item not on the agenda? Anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Councilmembers. Usually I don't bring paperwork. I usually just talk from the heart, but I did want to write down a few definitions so that I would know what the meaning of the words I would be using. A year ago, I came in here. First time y'all brought the flag issue up, and I tried to tell you that it was a Pandora's box. I reckon now you found out. What I didn't tell you was why so many... Oh, excuse me. My name's Wayne Bird, President of Heritage Preservation Association. I live three miles just outside of city limits, so I'm not really in Ringo. But I just forgot to tell you that. Yeah, the thing I didn't get a chance to speak with you with, because I had a lot of personal problems a year ago with the passing of both of my parents. Really wanted to speak with you really on southern culture. I mean, the Bible Belt. That's located in the south from what I hear. It's not up north. It's not out west. So it goes to wondering, why is it in the south? Well, we were a culture of people who believed in God and our Savior Jesus Christ and the relationship of work, living each day with Him, walking with Him, trying to do our best in a nation of freedom. That is closely intertwined with southern heritage, because as I started learning my southern heritage, I drew closer to the Lord. As I drew close to the Lord, I found that my southern heritage was deeply rooted in it. We had family, honor, and moral values. Most time when you pass what I call an ordinance, an authoritative decree or law of a municipality or regulation, that's passed for people that do not have morals, that do not have self-respect, for them nor their neighbors. You have to pass laws for those people. In the laws that are not written, those people think they can do what is not prohibited. But we go to a higher calling as southern people. Our laws come from our God. Man's law falls beneath that. If we always strive to do what's right in His eyes, chances are we're not going to break any man's laws that He makes to keep people that do not have any moral integrity about them. And as a Christian, it's our duty to stand up and fight evil where it is, for evil can easily triumph for good men not to do anything or say anything. So we were commanded by our Lord and Savior to stand up against those things. Getting back to the flag resolution. Now, I knew I had a gentleman's agreement, the HPA did. It was a gentleman's agreement. I never signed anything. My name's not on anything. The HPA's name was never on anything. But it was a gentleman's agreement. With who? Honorable men that had words, that kept their word in their integrity. The men I dealt with twenty years ago were Seawood Anderson was the mayor, Linwood Wright was vice mayor, John Hamlin, Shirley Mayhew, Stokes Daniels, Mark Janack, F.W. Towns, Doyle Thomas, and Joyce Glaze. Boy, that was a fun time back then. Joyce and I wanted to get together after all that and show that we were a unity in the community. I may should have took her up on that offer, but I didn't. So with this resolution, it was an honorable word for these people.
Respectfully, Mr. Bird, are you near conclusion?
I got ten minutes, sir.
Five.
I'm representing the organization.
You act... They didn't stand. Are they with you tonight? They didn't stand. I said a group would have ten minutes.
You want them to stand up?
And I asked to identify the group at the time you're speaking, and you didn't do that.
Okay, then we'll cut to the chase.
Thank you.
Sherman Saunders?
Yes, sir.
Mayor Sherman Saunders, excuse me, because you always told me Sherman when we talked back in the summer. You and I wanted to do what was best for the city. That's what you kept telling me. You have failed this city. You have divided it. You have gotten hostility among people that only wanted to just honor their local history in the city and be proud of it.
Sir, I will allow you two more minutes. You did not identify your group when you started. Your five minutes have expired, but I will allow you two more minutes, okay?
Okay. And you have brought a lot of animosity among people when we really... When we put that flag up, it wasn't for any other reason. It was stated just for historical purposes. I wanted to try to put sign back up there. Y'all turned that down. What I was trying to do with HPA is draw tourism into the city of Danville to give these citizens a job of some type, some income coming in this city. A business is not going to locate when a community doesn't even honor its own local history. How do you think he's going to take care of their business when they are at odds? And when you have no moral conduct in this city? Well, we're going to promote the city of Danville best that we can. And y'all've got six months left before you turns up, some of you, to do the honorable and right things that you do have options to do. If the city government cannot honor a piece of property because of some kind of conditions that have changed over the years, then they should do the honorable thing and turn it over to someone who can't if their hands are tied on it. And in closing, when resolutions fail, there, when there's no law written, y'all took care of that. Y'all wrote a law. So you just take that one little V letter, you change it to an S.
Mr. Bird, respectfully, thank you.
I'm going to restore help with the city of Danville.
Thank you, sir.
Restore the honor to this city council. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hi, how you doing? My name is Louis Garnett. I live in Virginia, Danville. And I'm here about the legal system in Danville. My son had a probation violation. Matter of fact, he had ten. Not wearing a seatbelt, not having a blinker, not enough rubber on the tires. Each violation is against his probation, and he could go to jail for not having enough rubber on the tires, for not using a signal, for not wearing a seatbelt. Danville is a very, very beautiful place. When I first came down here in nineteen eighty-nine and started Danville Construction Company, very beautiful place. I went wrong. My behavior went wrong. But it was a very good place to start a business, I thought. If it's food, people love to eat. But I find that minorities starting a business to grow in Danville doesn't seem to take off well. And it seems when I came here, I'm going from my own experiences, when I came here, I had more problems from the black community than I did the white. I didn't argue most of the stuff that went wrong. It was my fault. I did that, even though I was growing in leaps and bounds. So I backed up, straightened my life out a bit, because it's still going and life is still strengthening. But my thing here is, black men in this town don't have a chance. They don't have jobs. They don't have nowhere to go to play. If they're around together, they get harassed. Don't go up North Main Street, because you could have a problem up North Main Street whether you do something or not. Have a handkerchief in your pocket that has colors on it. Talk about flags. You wear a handkerchief, they put it around your head or wipe your face, and you gotta go to jail because they think you're a gang member. Fear has allowed us to be foolish as hell, and that's exactly where we are. You know, I went to court with my son. The prosecutor lied to the judge on his charts. He was found not guilty. He still had to go to jail, but the prosecutor lied to the judge. I went to get the transcripts. Can't get the transcripts even though it's public knowledge, but because you have freelance people who does the transcripts. For two pages, I could have sat there and Xeroxed it myself. There's a lot of trickery that's made to stay in place, and it's been in place for four hundred years, and like molasses going up a hill in winter. That's how fast it moves. And it's too slow for me. I love my son dearly, and there's a lot of young people, no matter what color they are. I have three races in me: white, black, and American Indian. And two out of three have been screwed to death. I refuse to go gentle into this good night when it comes to Sirach, S-I-R-A-C-H, not the spelling of the liquor. This needs to change. Young men need to get to see judges on probation violations a heck of a lot faster. This is not a, how do you say, a mistake? This is well engineered, and everybody in here knows it. And anybody who can hear me, who is aware, knows it. It has been well engineered, and it needs to... Come on, this is the city of churches. One club in this town where blacks and whites or anybody else can party together in a decent mindset.
Are you near conclusion?
I know nothing's really going to be done. Four hundred years.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on any item not on the agenda? Thank you. Is there a motion to approve our minutes October twentieth, two thousand and fifteen? Mr. Campbell, your second. And Mr. Buckner, discussion of the motion. Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell? Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Bogler?
Aye.
Under the consent agenda, the following budget amendments, items A through C, have been discussed by city council, introduced for first reading, be further considered by city council in public hearing, excuse me. After the public hearing has been closed, there will be no discussion on these items, and they will be enacted by one motion. Discussion desired by a council member or a citizen. The item will be removed from the consent process and considered separately. Anyone wish to move any item A, B, or C? Councilor, pleasure. Mr. Gilstrap?
Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of the consent agenda, items A through C.
Second, Mr. Buckner. Please call the roll.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Bogler?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
New business consideration of adopting ordinance to appropriate funds for anticipated revenues. Councilor, pleasure. Mr. Campbell?
It's my move for adoption ordinance amended to fiscal year two thousand and sixteen budget appropriation orders by anticipating revenues in amount of fifty-nine thousand, ten dollars from the operation of electronic monitoring program, outreach detention program for Pennsylvania County, and appropriate the same.
Okay, there's a second? Mr. Rowley, discussion on the motion. Mr. Shanks?
Yes, Mayor, with this item and the next item, item B, there, in reading through the reports, I had some questions with regard to the changing, exchanging of monies between municipalities in the state. I was hoping that maybe, well, maybe Mr. Larkin, I'm not sure, sorry to catch anybody offhand, but it looks like to me there's a whole lot of question about, one, whether, how many participants are going to be, whether the state's going to kick in what they have in the past, whether there'll be shortages like there were last year in state contributions. How is financially, how does the city have to make up, first of all, depending on the county's use of this program, does the county reimburse the city for anything over? And will we reimburse the county for anything under the proposed budget amount?
It's my understanding that the county, any county participants in the program, the county has to pay for that total cost.
Even if it's above and beyond what we're budgeting here?
That would be my understanding. I think we may have...
Excuse me, Mr. Larkin, would this be the adult or youth program or both?
Okay.
Because Ms. Johnson is here, you need assistance, if you like assistance.
I believe, I think this is a youth program, is it not?
If you'd like to come forward and comment on that, ma'am, Director of the Detention Center? You understand Mr. Shanks' question and Mr. Larkin's response?
My question, the report for this item A, which is the part that pertains to Pennsylvania County Electronic Monitoring, and the next one is also with regard to monitoring services for I, when reading the report, yes, juvenile also. There's a large, a fair, a decent amount of money that is being provided by the state, that sometimes is provided, sometimes isn't to the full extent that we anticipate. My question is, all these numbers are, the county's numbers are estimated and could go up and down, and certainly the contribution by the state could go up and down. How is, how are all these fluctuations handled on behalf of the city's expense?
I'll start with Pennsylvania County with the electronic monitoring and outreach detention.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, speaking to my...
Oh, I'm sorry. As far as Pennsylvania County and the electronic monitoring and outreach detention, we charge them per service unit. And then they reimburse us at our cost. And so that would be revenue coming in, and it usually does support the program. This past year, and of course, you know, all of this, the projections are very difficult to make because it is at the will of the court and how much they utilize the programs. Last year, both the county and the city utilized the electronic monitoring, GPS, and outreach detention to a great degree. So that we projected on those past numbers.
All right. And forgive me for incorporating item B, but they're kind of related, and it'd be quicker if we did so. Is that all right, Mayor? So from the county's perspective, which is item A, every expense that is incurred is reimbursed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And what about, okay, the county has to, what, there's state money involved here in this. If the state money is short, does that get covered by the county too?
Well, they have to submit a plan. They pay for those programs out of VJ triple C A or for the Virginia Juvenile Crime Control Act funds. They submit a plan, and so they have to pay that out of those state funds or out of one of their funds if that should fall short.
And why I ask this is, if I'm not mistaken, according to the report I read tonight, the state funding for that program was cut last year by several thousand dollars for the local share. So the county would make up their local share of that?
Yeah, they would have to make up their local share. Now, this particular, like with, and I'm moving on into item B with our VJ triple C A Danville programs. Those particular funds have been cut, so we have to make that up, of course, from city funding. The maintenance of effort is typically twenty-six, three, twenty-four. That's been twenty-six thousand, three hundred, twenty-four dollars since its inception. It's not changed at all. It's never increased. Like I said, this past year, the judge in Danville utilized electronic monitoring and GPS monitoring to a great degree. So therefore, the cost of the equipment skyrocketed. Also, salaries, with the pay-for-performance situation, those employees are covered under that too. So, you know, they had the increase in salaries. So therefore, we did have a shortfall in that program.
Okay. So I just, just to summarize what I think I just heard, our overhead expenses on this program went up, but the state's funding stays the same?
Well, the state's funding can stay the same or, like, you know, like last year, they reduced it. Our maintenance of effort, like I said, has been the same since nineteen ninety-five. It has never changed. And so then this year, of course, was one of the first years we've ever had to ask the city for additional monies.
And that was because the General Assembly did not allocate the same amount as the past?
Well, they allocated the same amount that they've allocated for the past couple of years, but then it came back and it was cut at the end of the year.
But they cut it?
They cut it.
Okay, that's, thank you.
As a follow-up, whether it be from Pennsylvania County or any other jurisdiction, whatever we charge will be the net cost of that service. There's no cost to the city. Is that correct?
Right.
You mentioned about funding being cut. Is there any net new expenses for our local fund because of the cuts?
Can you repeat that?
Are there any net new funds costing our local fund because of the cuts?
None.
Thank you. Anything else you want to add, Mr. Larkin?
Just want to recognize Michelle Johnson, who's the Director of the W.W. Moore Junior Detention Home. Apologize for not saying that earlier.
He stated that, so I'm sorry to introduce myself.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion, Mr. Gilstrap?
Is the only juvenile detention facility in Danville in Pennsylvania County W.W. Moore?
Yes, sir.
All the kids at W.W. Moore are sent there by a judge, either county or city?
Yes, sir.
Any other jurisdictions send their kids to Danville W.W. Moore?
We have Halifax County, Mecklenburg County, the city of Martinsville, Henry County, and Patrick County.
Okay. Of all those jurisdictions combined, any of those, well, let me, um... Do we offset the cost of any of those localities from city funds?
No, not that I'm aware of. They are charged the per diem that is set by the city, and they offset the cost for our operation.
Thank you. Mr. Shanks?
I just want to say thank you for having the answers and being such a parent. Thank you very much.
Further discussion? Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, first reading. Consideration of adopting ordinance to appropriate grant funds for electronic monitoring, outreach detention program, and contract mentoring services. outreach detention program, and contracted mentoring services of a Moore Detention Home. Counsel your pleasure. Counsel your pleasure. Mr. Jones.
Mr. Mayor, I will be adopting ordinance amending the fiscal year 2016 budget appropriation orders for a grant from the Department of Juvenile Justice in the amount of eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, along with the local share of thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars, for a total appropriation of one hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars, to provide for the electronic monitoring and outreach detention programs, and contracted mentoring service for the City of Danville at the WW Moore Junior Detention Home and appropriate the same.
Is there second, Mr. Gilstrap? Discussion of the motion? First reading. Consideration of adopting ordinance granting special use permit at 132 Union Street Bridge Road. Open the public hearing, anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Yes, sir.
I'm Robbie Woodall, the, uh, I'm the dealer and owner of the property at, uh, 132 Union Street Bridge Road. What our plans are there, uh, with expanding of our business, we need to add some service payments to our facility. There is a requirement of our franchise agreement with Nino Corporation, and we've asked the city to approve that, so we can add on, uh, some more jobs to that locality.
Question from Mr. Woodall? Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else? Close public hearing, counsel your pleasure, Mr. Buckner.
May I like to make a, uh, motion to approve an ordinance granting special use permit for use of light frontage on the Dan River in accordance with Article three dot M, Section C, item seventeen, the code of the City of Danville, Virginia, nineteen eighty-six, as amended at 132 North Union, I'm sorry, 132 Union Street Bridge Road.
That your second, Mr. Rowley?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, discussion of the motion. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Uh, Mayor, I have a statement to re, uh, Alfred O. Shanks III, do hereby state that I have a conflict of interest regarding the consideration of ordinance granting a special use permit filed by quality construction for uses with light frontage on the Dan River located at 132 Union Street Bridge Road, listed as agenda, new agenda item, new business agenda item C. Therefore pursuant to the State and Local Conflict of Interest Code of Virginia, Section two point two dash thirty-one twelve, I must abstain for both, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bogler?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Consideration of adopting ordinance to rezone six sixty-eight Arnett Boulevard. Open the public hearing, anyone wish to speak? Anyone? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, uh, that particular property, uh...
Your name, please?
Uh, Bill Mitchell.
Okay.
Uh, it was, uh, started as a dry cleaning plant in nineteen fifty-six, and, uh, my, my family and myself ran it as a dry cleaning plant for thirty-eight years, and then, after that, two other cleaners used it as branch offices, uh, and that took it up to, uh, two thousand and nine, at which time, uh, a dog grooming business went into the building, and, uh, for five years. And now it's, uh, vacant again, and there is someone that has shown interest into reopening it as a dry cleaner, and, uh, I would love to see, with your all's permission, that that take place.
Any question for Mr. Mitchell? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Close public hearing, counsel your pleasure. Mr. Shanks.
Yes, Mayor, I move for adoption of ordinance rezoning from NC neighborhood commercial to conditional highway retail commercial, uh, six sixty-eight Arnett Boulevard, and adjacent parcel ID number oh four, three, five, uh, I'm sorry, oh four, five, three, five, otherwise known as grid eighteen sixteen, block oh five, parcel five, and four respectively, at the ci, uh, as shown on the City of Danville, Virginia zoning district map.
Okay, and the second, uh, Mr. Buckner. Discussion on the motion. Uh, Mr. Shanks.
I had a question for Mr. Gilley, I think he's here. The, uh, Mr. Gilley, thank you, I, the exhibit A that's included here, is that, those conditions are your normal highway, I mean, sorry, normal neighborhoods' conditions, I'm sorry, normal highway retail commercial conditions, the exhibit?
Yes.
Um, I was just curious, he mentioned a dog grooming business, there were a couple things that were knocked out, and I just wanted to understand why they were.
The advocate actually created that list.
He created this? Fine, that's all I needed, no, thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Bogler?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye. Consideration of adopting ordinance to include a grant to assist the development of Sandy Creek Park. Counsel your pleasure. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose ordinance amending the, uh, fiscal year 2016 budget appropriation ordinance to include a grant from the Riverbank, Riverbank Fund of the Community Foundation of the Dan River Region in the amount of twenty-four thousand dollars to assist the development of Sandy Creek Park.
Second, Mr. Campbell. Discussion on the motion. First reading. Consideration of adopting ordinance for park recreation fee schedule. Mr. Bogler?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance establishing certain parks and recreation user fees of the City of Danville.
Is there second, Mr. Gilstrap? Discussion of the motion, Mr. Rowley and Mr. Bogler and Mr. Vice Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, thought about this one hard and long, and, uh, it seems to me we're getting down too far in the weeds. Um, uh, I know for sixty-plus years, uh, Parks and Rec, well, the city's been doing this, I, I just think as a board of directors that we are, I think we're way too far in the weeds trying to put prices in like this. Uh, that's why we have people, we hire people to give us advice on that. Uh, my question would be, what are we gonna do, or how many people have rented, already rented, uh, places in the, in the city for next year? And obviously, it's gotta be some, and if it is, what do they pay? Do they pay what, they pay the fee on what was they rented as, or do they pay the fee as it, after this goes into effect? I, I'd like to get that answered if I could. Uh, but again, I just think we're way too far in the weeds, and yes, I'm gonna vote no for, no against it.
Okay, Mr. Bogler?
Um, yeah, and with all due respect to my colleague, Councilman Rowley, I just want to say that I believe this is a good thing we're doing tonight, and I want to thank Parks and Rec and, and our acting city manager and my fellow council members that we worked as, as a team on this. This was not, uh, council saying, we want it this way, and this is the way it's gotta be, this was a collaborative effort. Um, and so I want to thank everyone who was involved with it, making it possible, by reducing the fees, and that's what we're voting on tonight, this is a reduction across the board on a number of fees, we're still covering costs. We will be making our facilities and programs more accessible to our citizens and more inviting to those who may wish to come into our city. There's a great opportunity to utilize sports tourism in Danville, and tonight's the first step towards realizing that opportunity. We're blessed to have a lot of great, uh, facilities here in Danville, and I think now's the time to maximize their potential. So in my opinion, this is a win for our city and a win for our citizens, I'm gonna be supporting the reduction of these fees. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, uh, being a business owner, there's two ways, or there's a number of ways to run a business. One is current, what we've done with Parks and Rec, we directed them, council directed them two, two, three years ago, to set fees to pay your way. Now we're set fees high enough that you will pay for the facility, and that's what they did at our direction. Uh, so that's one way to do it, that's the way we've done it. Now, we've had complaints that maybe the rates were too high. So the other way to do it is lower your rates, hoping that you will increase the number of tournaments, usage of your facilities, and offset that decrease, because we're not gonna be paying our way, we're gonna have to come up with extra funds, but hopefully we'll increase our usage enough that we'll overcome that and end up with a positive balance. So council now, uh, and I think it's reasonable to try, to try to go and, uh, by drawing in more tournaments, et cetera, we'll end up with a positive balance, the time, the jury's out on that. And we've asked Parks and Rec after a year to come back to us and say, hey, is it working? Did we increase the number of tournaments? Did we increase usage of the parks? If we did, we'll end up in the good. If we don't, we'll end up in the red. So yes, it is an experiment. But I just want to point out, we're changing our directive to Parks and Rec. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Uh, Mr. Rowley?
If somebody could, I don't know if, if Parks and Rec can tell us, or Assistant City Manager Larkin can tell us, what's gonna happen to the people who have already reserved places for two thousand and sixteen?
The, my interpretation would be that the new fees would be effective tomorrow or after it's adopted, and whatever, depending on the date, if any, from here on out, any rental that occurs after this date would be on the new fee, would not be on the old fee. I could be corrected on that.
What if they...
Excuse me, let me interrupt, uh, Mr. Larkin, and Mr. Rowley, you still have the floor. Mr. Bogler, when you read the, the ordinance, did you include the statement effective November eighteen, twenty fifteen? Cause I have it here on mine, but I don't think I heard that.
I read it, what it is off the agenda that was...
Okay, my agenda, my, uh, program says effective, who, Mr. Larkin, yesterday, November eighteen, twenty fifteen, is that, do you understand it?
It should be effective November eighteenth.
Okay, so that should be in the record, even if it's not on the print, Mr. Attorney?
Well, what I was gonna say is, once you sign it, if, if there's no date specified, once you sign it, it becomes effective. So if you sign it tonight during the work session, it'll become effective in about an hour from now.
Okay, and didn't mean to confuse you, Mr. Bogler, but, um, mine says November eighteen, twenty fifteen, but that's why I read the question.
We got a different one, so...
Okay, all right, back to you, Mr. Larkin, and then, Mr. Rowley.
Um, what I was saying is that any rentals that are scheduled to occur after, if it's adopted, after that point, the fee will be what it is, um, what, what the new, the new fee will be, and if they've paid already, then I would imagine they get refunded if there are any circumstances like that, but my interpretation would be that if the rental occurs anytime after it's adopted, that they should pay the then-current fee.
Mr. Rowley?
And anybody, let's, let's forget about two thousand and sixteen, people that have rented facilities for this year, till the end, December thirty-one, it would revert back to these prices, is that what we're saying?
Uh, from the date of adoption going forward, till the end of, of this year and until it gets changed again, yes, but anything that's already occurred in the past, we're not refunding.
Okay, and has anybody researched on, on how, how many dollars we're gonna lose based on rentals from this year? If, you know, we know what the new prices are, have we looked at, what's the difference in that income?
I don't believe we have that information. Bill's here, and he's shaking his head, I, I'm not sure how many rentals we've already had, um, for the future, for these...
There's a question, has there been research, I think the answer seemed to be no.
Well, it, it, you know, I mean, it, again, to me, this is, we way down in the weeds, we, we don't need to be doing this, but, and, and I, I, I respect Mr. Bogler's, but we are telling Parks and Recreation what to do. That's, that's where I get at it.
Mr. Shanks.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to emphasize, I concur with, with everything that Dr. Miller has stated, uh, the truth matter is, we have not covered expenses, we, the truth matter is, we asked Mr. Skrana to come forward a couple of years ago to cover expenses, make, make the, make the, uh, product that he offered cost efficient, and, and I understand, uh, what we're doing, and like Dr. Miller stated, this is somewhat of an experiment to see if we can increase usage, and, and it was brought forward by a couple of council members, and I'm willing to go along with it, however, uh, I think we definitely need to see the results that come out, as has been asked from, uh, City Council to the Parks and Recreation to further determine whether this is an efficient way to operate. And again, uh, to agree with Councilman Rowley, I do agree that these, getting into the fee structure, every single fee, including faxes and telephone, uh, note rate fees and all that, is just way too far down into the, into the weeds to, for City Council to be involved, and every year, it's gonna be the same thing, it's gonna be part of the same process, budgeting process. So I hate to see us go down this route, clearly, a majority of council wants to go down this route. I have asked about, uh, some of the reduction of fees, and the numbers that were presented to us were in the ten, in less than twenty thousand dollars, uh, but certainly, a close eye needs to be kept on what we're doing here, and if this doesn't work out, we need to certainly correct that as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I go to you, Mr. Gil, Mr. Gilstrap, my understanding, when we started talking about these fees, one of the main reasons, while the recommend, uh, as to why the recommendation was made to reduce the fees, I understand that we were losing business, that other people were going to, uh, other cities, count, county, uh, count, towns, counties, states, taking the money, and the Danville losing money because of what we're charging. We also talked about, in regards to has a study been done, and what the net loss would be if we enacted these fees, and I understand that some history will need to be determined, uh, take place before we can determine that. So it may be six months, it may be twelve months, I don't know if we sat on a date, but it seems to me, this is a change, and after this change, if it, if it's approved, has been enacted, council can determine then any net losses and or gains, and if council choose to revert to where we were, uh, then we could do that if so desired. But I understand that the experience factor, factor needs to occur to determine if we have any net loss and net gain, is that correct?
Yes, uh, we plan to, after twelve months, take a look at how the change in the fee has affected usage and the revenue, and present that information to council for information.
Thank you, Mr. Gilstrap.
Well, let me just say that, um, every fee in the city is a set, established by city council, every fee, with the exception of recreation participation fees, of which the experts set those own fees for whatever it costs to take belly dancing, or whatever program they want. They set those fees. City council, we establish cemetery fees, we establish utility fees, water, gas, electric, we establish trash collection fees, and we listen to those experts in every one of those departments. Yet, if we have discussion, we as a group of nine council, set the fees for each one of those. I do not see this being any exception. We as a council should establish rental property fees at a reasonable rate for our citizens to utilize. Now, if we're gonna take the, in comparison, the percentage differences, if we took the rental fees of the Parks and Recreation Department and compared that to their budget, nobody correct me, but I don't think it's even a half of a percent. Okay? So if it's two thousand dollars difference out of a four million dollar budget, we aren't making a major impact with the fees that we collect. However, we should rent and we should collect at a reasonable rate that our citizens can, uh, participate. More importantly, we should rent at a rate that will attract people to our city. We should rent that we can have softball tournaments, we can have soccer tournaments, we can have, uh, a national mountain bike race. All these produce revenue for the city. So if we're going to take in comparison, we need to compare along with the rates and the differences that you collect with the increase in food tax and hotel, motel tax, that go hand in hand. We should promote our city, and we should give our citizens the best rate possible, and, and I think as a group, that's what we have done in several work sessions, and that's what we, as a group, of the fees we decided to, to administer. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Rowley, I'm gonna come to you, but let me just say this... Thank you. Mr. Rowley, I'm going to come to you. But let me just say this before I do. I think it's pretty clear, in my view and observation, tonight and before, that the nine of us know how we feel about this and how we intend to vote. I think discussion is good. I don't believe that debate's going to change anything. That's just my view. So as we talk about this, we'll do this, but at some point, very quickly, I'll be calling for a vote. Mr. Rowley?
I just say, Mr. Gilstrap's speculating when he says $2,000. We don't have any idea what it's going to be. I don't agree that it's not, I agree that it's not going to be $250,000. But it, I think you speculate when you say $2,000. Every department comes to us, and we do, we agree upon the fees, but every department that's ever come to us, they give us the reasons why it should be this, and what do we do? We say yes. This one, we're going digging down in there trying to do every fee. We, I look at it this way, whatever the difference is, say it's $15,000, I don't know, that's speculation, to catch up to that with the new fees, you're going to be making Parks and Recreation work that much harder. You've got to have a whole lot more going on to get, to make up the difference in what it was being charged and what's being charged now. I just, I mean, I hear what we're saying, I just think we're not listening to the experts, and I think we're too far in the weeds. I won't say anything else, so Mr. Mayor, I promise.
Mr. Vogler, your hand was up. I will call on you, and I say to us, after Mr. Vogler has completed his remarks, I will call for the vote. Mr. Vogler?
Yeah, I just wanted to lastly say that I think all of us on City Council, what we try to do is, is listen to the people who put their faith in us to put us in these seats, and listen to them when we can. And you're not going to be able to please everyone, but you try to make changes when you can. And if we do our job well, if a citizen comes to us with a good idea, and we're able to implement it, and we can make it work, then that's what we do. And to me, that's a job well done. And so this isn't something that I, you know, that some of us just sat at home one night and thought, gee, it'd be nice if, if we did this. This is something that, that a lot of us have heard about from citizens. And I can speak for myself, I tell you, I've been playing in the softball league, and they even talk about it in this new Parks and Rec magazine. You know, I hear it from folks, I've been hearing it for four years now. And so it was a real concern in the community, and it was something that was brought to council and asked if we could do something about it. And after working with Parks and Rec and City staff, we found out that we could. And so I'm glad that we're having this vote tonight. And as I stated before, I will be supporting the reduction of these fees. Thank you, Mayor.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Well, even though our data's all anecdotal from past history, I will vote for it. Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
No.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Consideration of adopting the ordinance for the Danville Public Library Fee Schedule. Counselor, your pleasure. Mr. Buckner?
Mayor, we adopted an ordinance establishing fees and charges for the Danville Public Library.
There a second, Mr. Jones. Discussion on the motion. I'm Mr. Vice Mayor.
Well, here's another thing we're going to end up paying for, because citizens of Danville will pay for this, because right now, the citizens of Danville do pay for library fees, $50 per family is a calculated fee. But we're, again, trying to draw more people to use our facilities, so we lower the fees for out-of-town residents, or no fees, and they will end up getting the service for free. Now, that can be a good thing. I think it'd be a good thing when we're going to allow students, right? We have a lot of students in this town who are from out of city, and certainly, they should not have to pay fees. We have teachers who live out of Danville City, but who work in Danville City Schools, they have to pay this fee if they want to use the Danville Public Library, and I don't think that's fair. And as I understand, teachers will be excluded from paying fees, no matter at what distance they live. And I've had complaints from teachers about that, they want to use the library facilities and have to purchase a card. So certainly, there are reasons pro and con here. It's not a huge amount of money, but it originally was tried to defer, help pay for the Westover Library. That's, that's the original, why this was put in, because Westover Library, to keep it maintained, we established a fee for out-of-town residents. But business, Mayor, I will support it for the reasons I mentioned, the students and the teachers, who certainly shouldn't have to pay these fees. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Vogler?
Yeah, I've always believed that, that we should try and expand educational opportunities for citizens when we have an opportunity to do so, and within reason. And by eliminating the $50 library fee tonight, I think that that's what we're doing. And this fee has been a mess. And as Dr. Miller had stated, the reason for it originally was, I guess we're good intentions, but it just has not panned out that way. It's not brought in any significant amount of revenue. And what we're voting on tonight is a return to a policy of the way it was done for decades and decades. And the fee was not needed. It was operated this way for years, and it operated quite well. That fee was not needed then, and I don't think it's needed now. And so if you live within 50 miles of the library, you'll be able to go in and you can get a library card for free, the same way that I, as a citizen of the City of Danville, can go to a Pennsylvania County Library and get a library card there. They don't charge us for their library card. So I'm glad that we're, we're going back to this policy. I hope it is approved tonight, I'll be supporting it. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Mr. Mayor, I too will be supporting this for reasons that we have discussed, but that's not my concern. My concern is, why are they separated? We were told a month ago that we wanted to package all the Parks and Recreation fees, the library as part of Parks and Recreation. We couldn't take the library separately, we wanted, had to package it all together. So we put this vote off a month, and now I find they separated. I really don't understand why the separation, or why we had to wait a month to act on the library fees if they were going to be separated.
I don't know if there were any legal reasons for that, but I know I requested that we vote on all fees at the same time in order to prevent confusion to the citizens of Danville.
And I, and I don't disagree with that, Mayor. My question is, well, okay, why are they separated?
Could I respond to it, Mr. Mayor, please?
Um, excuse me. Mr. Vice Mayor, you're next.
Well, just, I just wanted to clarify, even if you live outside of 50 miles, if you're a student or a teacher, you don't pay the fee. If you're a student from Pennsylvania, you go to Avery College, you don't have to pay a fee.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Campbell?
Yes, I thought it was separate, Councilman Gilstrap, because there was a difference of opinions on the fees for the library and reference to the fees for the other recreational things for the community. I thought that was the major reason why it was separate.
Okay, Mr. Rowley?
We had council members that wanted separated.
Yeah.
We had a work session, and we had two or three council members that said we wanted separated. And...
Why does it matter?
That's why it's separated.
Ms. Gilstrap?
Well, I, I, that's not my recollection, but it very well could be. I was simply saying is that if we were going to separate them, Councilman Rowley, and which we have, we could have resolved the library fees a month ago.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree.
And, and, and we did it a month ago.
Excuse me, Mr. Gilstrap. After Mr. Gilstrap finished, and he had the floor, I'm going to call on Mr. Jones. After I call on Mr. Jones, I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll.
I'm finished, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Gilstrap. Back to you.
I've made my point, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Mayor, I think I can bring a little clarity to this. Mr. Gilstrap, Mr. Rowley is absolutely correct. That was the work session when you had to leave early. And the work session considered, you had to leave early to go to Puerto Rico, and the work session was, as Councilman Campbell stated, we did not want, we did not want either or to die down with lack of votes. So that's what, it wasn't, Mr. Rowley was absolutely correct. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm glad I was able to slide that Puerto Rico...
Mr. Rowley?
No.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
No more sugary drinks tonight, you guys, before council, okay? All right? Diet or water, period. Under communication, Deputy Manager, Mr. Larkin?
I have nothing this evening, sir, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Attorney, Mr. Whitefield?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk, Mrs. Sue Susan D. DeMasi?
Nothing, sir.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner?
Yeah, I'd like to thank all my fellow council members who are participating, and the City Attorney. In No Shave November, it looks like we're getting a lot of support behind this thing. We're going to have one big blowout at the end of the month, and see how much money we can raise for the Danville Area Cancer, Danville Cancer Association. Also, thumbs up to GW this past weekend for a job well done. Also, like everybody in our city to please try to go by the substation downtown. It's been lit up in the colors of the French flag and support for France, and just keep them in your thoughts and prayers. That's all tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Reverend Campbell?
Yes, I just wanted to, first of all, correct, Councilman Jones, he didn't go to Puerto Rico, he went to Clemson football game, that's why he missed that.
I live in Puerto Rico.
But we do send our prayers out for what has been going on in Paris. And I know the chief police is not here, but I'd like to ask our Deputy City Manager, with all that is happening in the world and in our country, are we looking at extra protection here in the city of Danville, or are we just, what are, are we doing anything, simple as that?
I believe that our staff is always vigilant, and we encourage our citizens, when they see something, to say something. We've always encouraged them to do that. And that's a good point, I'm glad you brought it up. While we're on TV, continue, I hope the citizens will continue, if they see something suspicious, to say something. It doesn't hurt to let us know, we can look into it. If it's no big deal, then we can move on. But if it's something to deal with, we'd be glad to deal with it. But thank you for bringing that up.
Yes, we realize that we are in dangerous times, and you have to prepare for the unexpected. Hope that it would never happen here in Danville, anywhere else here in America. But we want to be vigilant as much as possible. All right, and second, I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, enjoy yourselves and family next week. And on tomorrow, the Attorney General, Mark Herron, will be at Boba Way, 9:30 in the morning, to make a special announcement. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilstrap?
As always, I thank the citizens for attending and for being, listening on TV, and thank you for your correspondence, emails, and phone calls, because that's the way we learn what you would like to do. I would also like to thank Councilman Vogler for the prayer tonight. I thought it was very fitting, and our prayers and our thoughts are certainly with the citizens of France. But we're also should be asking for blessings on the United States of America, as a, one of the free nations, that we continue our pursuit of, 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 not only freedom, but pursuit of happiness. And we do that by being safe. So we encourage our leaders to continue to protect our nation. And happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Robbie, we hear a lot of talk about what's going on in our country and around the world, the first responders. I want to thank you and Danville Life Saving Crew for all that you all do for our community, and thank you for being here. Dr. Osborne from Danville Public Schools, it's so good to see you. Just want to say thank you for all that you and Danville Public School is doing. I received a call today from two of your school board members inviting me to tour the schools next week, and I look forward to doing it with them. And on that note, I would just like to say, we have some very great young people in our community accomplishing great things. We oftentimes hear about the bad, Mr. Mayor, but we have a lot of great, Dr. Osborne, and I know you see this all the time, we have wonderful young people doing wonderful things in our community. Teachers are doing a great job. And I strongly encourage all of our youth to take advantage of every opportunity to learn and to flourish. You'll be amazed at where and how hard the teachers work, the young people work, respect and preparation can take you in life, as well as help you obtain. Just want to say, you all hear me say this all the time, it's very important to have the media promoting our city with everything that we're doing in our city. And I say this to you often, Bruce, you responded to something today, and it meant the world to me. You did a great job, you calmed everything down. And that's what we need, that's what's going to help move our city forward. And I just want to say thank you for, and continue to keep up the good work. To everyone, as was stated, with everything that's going on across the country, and in the city, and everywhere else, please enjoy your families, love your families for Thanksgiving, take the first part of it and just say thanks. And I just want to say to all the council members, I sincerely appreciate each and every one of you, a great group of men and women too, to work with. Happy Thanksgiving to you and your families, and I look forward to, Mr. Gilstrap, getting us all tickets to the next time we go to Puerto Rico. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And we come to your house, what time, put down our Thanksgiving date?
Anytime, Mr. Mayor, anytime. I won't be there, but come on.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yeah, I want to thank Mr. Buckner for spearheading the cancer drive in the No Shave November. It took my office staff and my wife four days to figure out that I'd quit shaving. So this is a work in progress. Glad to see Ms. Osborne here. I know there've been some allegations through the press about things going on at GW, and council has every confidence in you and Mr. and Dr. Jones, that you'll look into this and let us know if there's any substance to these things. The best thing is to keep a cool head and find out the truth, rather than respond to allegations from one side. Great Christmas season coming up, we're going to have parades, we're going to have Thanksgiving turkey truck races. And this Saturday is the annual Holiday Bazaar at the Community Center. Well, if you've never been, you need to go. There'll be, from 8:00 to 2:00 this week, there'll be 80 vendors with crafts, local arts, crafts, homemade, homemade things, and baked goods, especially the apple pies are to die for. So make sure you support the Community Bazaar this week. Good luck on, for GW this weekend, they're going to Dulles, near Dulles, Northern Virginia. Maybe a touchy area, but good luck to them, I think they'll do well. From, just to dovetail on what Reverend Campbell said, I think we would sort of like to hear from the police chief, you know, what precautions, or if there's anything we need to be looking at. I mean, you know, unfortunately, terrorism can happen anywhere, and these terrorists tend to go after soft targets that are not secure. It's easy for them to do, to hurt a lot of people. So I think we need to look at that, and hopefully, the chief can give us and the council an update in the near future. And again, we're in solidarity with the French, and so get a chance to go down and look at the utilities and the lights there, and pray for the French people, and pray for the American people, because, you know, they've attacked the Russians, they've attacked the French, the day there was a bomb in Germany. Fortunately, I think it was Detective Volinoff, and guess who's next on the list? So be in prayer. Thank you, Mr. Vogler, for your prayer, that was straight to the point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rowley?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Shanks?
Uh, just a couple of things, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to address the two business people out here tonight. It's always good news when businesses are before us with the idea of opening or expanding, or something that is helpful with job creation in our city. Along those lines, I'd like to see council consider their plight and everybody else's plight that comes before us. The first Monday following the first Tuesday of the month, Planning Commission meets and, and votes on a case. And then, these gentlemen, like everybody else, has to wait almost six weeks for City Council to hear the case. Now, I know Mr. Woodall was ready to start construction, and contractors were ready to go six weeks ago, eight weeks ago. I hate to see, when jobs are so important, such a delay built into our system. And I was thinking about that today, and I was, hope that City Council will consider, and staff, because I'm sure somehow it got created on purpose to be this way. But if we could look... we could look at zoning cases on the first week or the first council meeting in the month, that would at least cut two more weeks out of the process. Because the reason it takes six weeks is the Planning Commission meets on Monday and then it has to be advertised for two weeks, so they almost need to start, the advertisement needs to be placed before the Planning Commission meets. So I'm hoping that maybe we'll consider taking zoning cases the first of the month instead of the second meeting in the month, and that would at least save two weeks in Mayor, I had the great fortune of sitting in for you Saturday night where a local legend, Tony Rice, was recognized, certificate of recognition by, resolution by you and by the city, and it was a tremendous honor. Councilman Buckner and Councilman Vogler were there, and later on, actually I think Councilman Rowley got there just before the recognition. But Tony Rice was born and raised here, was born here, raised shortly here, eventually moved to California as a child, but came back and lives close by and is a legend, not just in bluegrass, but all types of music. He was a tremendous instrumentalist, he's in the Bluegrass Hall of Fame, but he's also won a Grammy, he's been recognized numerous times as instrumentalist of the year, and Danville recognized him to Saturday night, and I thought it was wonderful, I just, it was one of the highlights of my career as far as being on city council, and it meant a whole lot to me to see Tony recognized by a lot of musical people that were in attendance and a lot of citizens of Danville that were in attendance on Saturday night. I too would like to say I saw and have received letters, emails and phone calls about the letter to the editor in the paper today. I'm certainly concerned about it and I don't want anyone to think that city council is not cognizant of the issue, and of course, the appropriate place at this point is the school board and the school system, but council has heard and is going to be listening, but kind of put the pressure on those that are in charge right now, and then hopefully we can all come to a good creative conclusion. And hopefully, it's not as bad as was depicted in the letter, and we don't know, someone else said that, we just don't know, but it's very important that we, as a community and as parents, most importantly, as parents, help to resolve the issues that were suggested in the letter to editor this today. Finally, I'd like to, on a more positive note, say to my fellow councilmen and to the citizens of Danville, I hope everybody has a wonderful Thanksgiving. The holidays are beginning to come upon us, the local economy is dependent on our local employers and our local businesses, so I encourage everyone to begin at home, support the local businesses and including the small businesses that will be supported. I think it's next Saturday, it's Small Business Saturday, I'm not sure, that's the date, I believe it is, but I encourage everyone that can to support local businesses. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Vogler?
Yeah, to those who had Puerto Rico as the word of the night in your office pool, congratulations. In regards to the zoning issues that Councilman Shanks just brought up, I could be mistaken, I thought that council had raised that question a year or so ago and staff had provided a reason, but I don't recall what it was. But if there is a way that that process can be streamlined, as Councilman Shanks suggested, I certainly would support that. I'd like to let folks know about the Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast, which will be December 5th from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. This is now the second year that we have done this. I meant to bring the tickets tonight to have for folks if they're interested, but I forgot, but those tickets are out there for people who are interested. It's a great thing that Kiwanis does, and Kiwanis is involved in a lot of great community projects in the area, and this is a fundraiser that helps with that. So it is December 5th, for those who are interested, contact anyone you know with Kiwanis, me or anyone else, they can help you get the tickets to be there. And lastly, as everyone else mentioned, just continue to pray for the folks in France and around the world, because as has been mentioned, that has been the most publicized incident here recently, but this is something that's ongoing, and it is something that people around the world are going to continue to confront. And, you know, it's an awful thing what's happening, and, you know, I'm hopeful that in the end goodwill prevail, and I know that it will, but in the meantime, continue to keep those folks in your prayers. And as mentioned, I'd like to thank our acting city manager, Ken Larkin, for helping make possible the lighting of the substation down on Bridge Street to be lit up in recognition of the folks who lost their lives in France. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And not to be redundant tonight, I concur pretty much with everything that has been said tonight. With regard to the Brew Fest, I've never seen as many people at one event recently as I saw last Saturday. I'm sorry that I could not stay for the full event, but special thanks to Mr. Shanks, to Mr. Buckner and to Mr. Vogler, and I understand Mr. Rowley's joined in as well for standing in for the city, and I'm sorry to get a chance to meet Mr. Rice, but I did try to, tried to meet him as well. And with regards to the school, yes, we saw the letter and we're sure the school handled that, and we'd like to know the results of their review of that issue. You know, there are too many national conversations coming up here lately, and they aren't good, whether it be community law enforcement, whether it be the terrorist act and other kinds of political issue going on in our country. You know, we all watch this, we cannot help but watch it, any form of media, smartphone, television, iPad, Facebook, whatever, you hear this stuff. And we've gone through 9/11 before and we hear the threats again. Yes, America is strong, no, America will never give in to any terrorist threat, but we must be vigilant. I still think, and I've said before, and many of you've said before as well, our local law enforcement, as far as I'm concerned in Danville, they are our local military, okay? Yes, they have access to National Guard and other military resources if they need them. So with regards to Mr. Campbell's comments earlier about, and Mr. Larkin as well, see something, say something. We must remain vigilant, yeah, we must remain vigilant, we must. Now, we also must understand that while we have great law enforcement officers, they cannot be everywhere at the same time, but they need us to let them know if we see something suspicious. They want to know, they really want to know, and they will address that. So again, special thanks to everyone, to all the council members, and let me just say to our city employees, thank you. Thanksgiving coming up, you're going to have a day off after Thanksgiving Day, enjoy it, spend time with family, and I remind council members, enjoy your Thanksgiving dinner, but after tonight, no desserts, okay? Me and the jury.